Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. Roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, city's planning consultant, Caroline Morton. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other device that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Krent.
Here.
Mr. Zanzika.
Mr. Shepke.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Mr. Edmonds?
I would move to approve as published.
Mr. Schultz, second.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
All right, item number four, public comment. For items that are not on the agenda, is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a public comment for items not on the agenda? Single one, close that item, and move on to the reports. ZBA report. Mr. Stratt?
We had one item on the agenda. And what it was, was a, actually a residence. Again, it was a, I'll find it. Oh, it wasn't a residence. It was actually Troy days. We gave approval for the Troy days to extend beyond the 10 o'clock deadline and extended the time period for them to start on Thursday and through Monday. That was the only item.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stratt, but I think they also, it was good for three years instead of just, they just said, "Come back next year."
That's correct. Yeah, that was something that they did, so kind of a precedent that they wanted to extend it for a three-year period opposed to an annual one-year. So that was granted as well.
All right, very good. Any questions from Mr. Stratt? All right, thanks, Donna. Item number six, downtown development authority report. Mr. Savadant?
There was no meeting for the month of June, so it probably could have been taken off the agenda.
All right.
But it is still information to tell, inform you that there was no meeting, so I guess maybe we should leave it on.
Thank you for that explanation. Item number seven, zoning order report.
Yeah, the, for the Planning Commission's information, we'll be meeting with the applicant for the PUD number four, the potential revised PUD between Alpine McLuhan and Big Beaver. We have been talking about some of the input that the Planning Commission gave them and how they intend to proceed. We're going to be coming before the Planning Commission in relative near future with, we call it a cleanup of the zoning ordinance. There's some typographical errors, formatting things, some tweaks we'd like to do, things that we've, we knew going in that we wanted to give it at least a year to kind of test drive it and see how some of these things worked. And there's just some things we'd like to clean up, and we'll come before you in the relative near future with a list and get your feedback on that, so you can expect that. And nothing specific to report because we don't have actual applications, but I've informed you before that we're getting more people kicking the tires on single-family residential. We're getting more people kicking the tires on senior housing and on apartments. So again, nothing specific yet, but we're getting inquiries, which again, I think is, it bodes well for the future and it's an indicator that maybe things are starting to turn around. Obviously, we've got a site condominium on the, on the agenda tonight. We've had some applications recently before us, but I think this is another, another sign that things are picking up.
Are any of those interested parties looking at refurbishing buildings or are they looking at greenfield sites? Or do you know that?
They're both, they're both vacant properties right now. Again, I don't want to publicly announce it because they're vacant sites right now.
Okay, all right, thanks. Questions for Brett? All right, moving on to the item number eight, site condominium development. Site plan review, proposed Beachview Estates Site Condominium, eight units slash lots, west side of Beach Road, 100 feet south of Long Lake, Section 18, currently zoned R1A one-family residential district. Mr. Savadant?
Mr. Carolyn.
Thank you, good evening. As the chairman mentioned before you tonight, it is an eight-lot, single-family detached site condominium project located on the west side of Beach Road, just south of West Long Lake Road. The parcel, the parcel is 5.3 acres in area and is currently unimproved, but it does have a regulated wetland and some significant tree stands. The proposed layout is a conventional eight-lot layout with the cul-de-sac and the new addition of a new private road app named Beachview Court. The proposed development is by right in the R1A zoning district and all lots do meet the R1A zoning requirements. The applicant is applying the lot size averaging and they do comply with those regulations as well. It should be noted that the southwest corner of the site is going to be used for stormwater detention. That's adjacent to the existing wetland, and I'll get a little bit more into that here in a second. Yes, it's north facing to your right, not north-south oriented. Access to the lots will be, again, as mentioned, a proposed new road and cul-de-sac off Beach. These meet all public road requirements and have been reviewed and approved by the engineering departments. There is going to be a new sidewalk along both sides of, in the cul-de-sac of the private road, as well as addition of a new sidewalk along Beach Road as well. We find that the pedestrian circulation and access is sufficient. As noted, there is a regulated wetland located in the southwest corner of the site and part of it extends over to the southern property. This is a regulated wetland because it is within 500 feet of a stream. As a result, the applicant is required to take necessary action and measures to protect such wetland, and they are required to get an MDEQ permit. Oakton County Soil Erosion has to review it. Oakton County Water Resources, et cetera, has to review this, as well as the Troy Engineering Department. That can be done as part of the final site plan review. In addition, the applicant has provided a tree preservation plan. The major item we note with this is that outside of a few selected trees in the southeast corner, some few selected trees in the parkway, and selected trees as to be saved as a result of builder discretion. Few, if any, trees on the site will remain in standing. It should be noted that the applicant does note that they are attempting to preserve a 41-inch red oak, which is on the southern property line. However, this is in the location of the proposed retaining wall, and we just don't, we don't know if it will be able to survive with the retaining wall in such close proximity, especially with, if there's any footing necessary, and that should be addressed by the applicant. In addition, we just simply ask the applicant to make any attempt to keep as many significant trees as possible on the site and do selective clearing within the building envelope themselves. The applicant has submitted the requirements for landscaping plan. The landscaping meets all requirements. The applicant is noting that they are adding 20 Norway spruces along the southern property line. This is above the requirements for landscape plan, and this is done with an agreement with the southern property owner. I just want to note that the southern property owner is granting a stormwater easement to this development in order to stormwater sewer easement from the wetland in the stormwater detention facility. And as a result, they have come to an agreement with the developer to provide some additional, to address some of his additional concerns he's raised, and these include an increased setback, an agreement with structural location for Lot 7, I believe, and Lot 6, as well as some increased landscaping, the Norway spruces that I mentioned. These provisions are shown in the site plan and in notes. Other than what's shown in the site plan and notes, the city is not necessarily appointing to that, but I just want the Planning Commission to be aware that the applicant and the southern property owner have come to this agreement. In your packet, you did receive a letter from the northern property owner requesting similar conditions. However, there's nothing in the ordinance to require the applicant to provide these additional considerations, but we do ask the applicant to work with the northern property owner to address some of these concerns if possible. In regards to supplemental requirements, the applicant has provided all requirements as outlined in Section 10.02, as well as C and E. The topographical and tree preservation plans were sealed by the surveyors, and the site plan, landscape plan, and grading plans were sealed by the engineer. It should be noted in our report that there were a few final engineering requirements that still have to be met, and the applicant is aware of these, and these clues, conditions for the stormwater detention, access to stormwater, and the revision of a 25-foot clearance on the site plan. This should not alter all of the site plan that's proposed in front of you tonight. So in conclusion, we do recommend preliminary site plan approval contingent upon the following recommendations being met. The first one is obtaining all necessary wetland permits. The second is selectively clear only those trees in an attempt to preserve as many significant trees as possible. And lastly, is to show the proposed 20 Norway spruce, which is located along the southern property line, on the site plan. They're currently only indicated on the, I'm sorry, on the landscape plan. They're currently only indicated in the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Carolyn. Any questions? All right. No questions, we'll open the, open this for a public hearing. If you'd like to step up to the microphone, please, and sign in, state your name.
I'm Candy Colby, and I live on 4699 White Oaks Court. You look at them, we're on Oak River. My house is the house that's directly, would be probably directly across in the Oak River. If you, yeah, you have 4699, right there, to the right. Where is this proposed sidewalk going to be? Just on the west side?
Yes, the applicant is required to provide a sidewalk on the west side along their property line.
Because 25 years ago, we came and we made sure we didn't have a sidewalk on our side because of, it was, everyone had children, they wanted to put it right through my backyard, and the mayor actually came and walked right through my backyard.
This will be their, on their side. This will be on their side of property.
Okay. And all the lots adjacent have agreed that this is okay, that this is, because it was supposed to be eight homes originally, single homes?
It remains eight single-family detached homes.
And as a, what are the levels of the buildings? Are we looking at ranches?
We have some elevations here, sir.
The height is 29 feet 6 inches, which is two stories, which is below the maximum height for that zone.
I honestly didn't know who you notified, because nobody in my neighborhood, other than me, knew about it. I mean, I don't know about the man across the street, but Doris is on the board and she knew nothing, Oak River knew nothing about this meeting. So I was kind of, and I just happened to get the second card, I missed the first card. So I saw the second card and then went, "Ooh, the meeting." Then I tried to call the bunch of people further down Beach Road, and they were not notified.
Mr. Savadant, can you respond to that?
Yeah, for site, for single-family residential developments, we have, the city has a policy to notify everyone who butts the property. It's actually not a state, it's not a requirement of the law, it's just a requirement of policy, so.
With the loss of trees, just because of recently, there have been some trees the city has taken down, we can now, on my deck, look right out there, and now my beautiful nature will be gone, so. And we're not real excited, but we know this is tax, and you're going to tax it out, but still, I didn't really know much about this. This is about, it's all I know. It's just what you, as much as I understand, I don't know, I don't understand at all either, so I just wanted to express that we're not excited about it at all. Not excited at all, just because of the traffic. We just had the road redone. That beautiful road has been totally redone, and with all this construction coming up and down Beach Road again.
Well, there'll be, there'll be permits required, and they'll have to keep the road clean and.
It is not that. That road just falls apart because of the wetland. We're all on water, and just the traffic alone, that road just, we've been there over 25 years, and it's been done twice since I've been there.
Well, I'm sure the city will watch that as they're bringing their equipment.
Because it's going to bring tons of equipment, and we just went through this once before, so, I mean, just recently. I don't know who pays for it, but a lot of money went into that road, and there's people walking all the time there.
Ma'am, if you want to comment, you're going to have to come up to the microphone and sign in.
Good evening, my name is Olive Bezoun. I reside on the north side of the property, adjacent to the development site at 4855 Beach Road. And I just want to point out that the, the house you have, I'm not planning, does not represent my house. That was erected back in 2006, and I got the permit and the certificate of, of pension with 2007 April, I'm afraid, so I don't know why they don't have the latest rendering of the house.
Well, maybe we can ask the petitioner to reverse that when they come up to the microphone.
I lived in Troy for about 35 years, and, you know, I'm very proud of the city, the schools, they raised the family, four kids, they're all professionals, and we couldn't have done it with, and it's a safe city in the nation, and best country in the world. I guess we all know that, I don't need to go over that, but I am, I'm, we couldn't have done it without, you know, the tax base, and from the get-go, I want to ask you to please conditionally approve the, you know, the faster we put homes and there is tax base, the faster we collect money, and our schools and schools, our safety, et cetera. I bought that property, which was about three acres in 1995, and I probably paid for it twice the ongoing rate there because it's Beach Road, it's Troy, et cetera. You know, my tax bill is pretty high, as you probably can imagine. I've never regretted and said, "Oh my God, I gotta pay my tax bill." I really enjoy living in the city, the whole, you know. The site plan that's in front of you tonight, again, doesn't really represent my house, and I'm not sure to why that was done, or, I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a mess on their part. Even the well, what do we call that there? Sidwell is on my, on my house is 127011, and here you have it as 004, I believe. I did try to talk to the developer and ask him to treat me as equally as the south end of the property on the first 420 yards, 20 feet, to put up, you know, some trees that would protect me from noise, from people pulling their cars into their driveway at night, and it's facing my house. And that would add some trees, the developer probably can sell these homes faster because they're not looking at the garage when they come to look at, you know, to purchase the house. The, we have the trees, we have the house. I am happy, the city is happy, everybody is happy. I think it's a, I would strongly ask you to please consider having them treat me as equally as the, you know, the southern Mr. Abbott, I guess. And the reason I know, he's my neighbor, I should have introduced myself some time ago. They came to the neighborhood about a year ago, and they probably spent tons of money on that house. So you look at the notes, there are, out of 19 notes, there is 9 to 16 pertain to the property, and Mr. Abbott mentioned in the notes, and the specific trees are, you know, spruce, et cetera. It's on the site plan, so I don't understand, I guess, the discrepancy, why they wouldn't even consider my, my request, but yet, we do that for the other property. And I understand they have, you know, had an agreement with the right-of-the-way or some, but that doesn't make it any, any less, you know, of a request for me to just treat me as equals, please.
Well, we'll certainly discuss that with the petitioner, but you know that the city has no authority, or there are no rules or regulations that would require those trees either on the south side of the property or the north side of the property. So it'd be something that, as a good neighbor, the petitioner may want to plant some trees, but we'll, we'll ask them as they come to the microphone.
I do appreciate and understand that, and I kind of knew that walking in, but at the end of the day, we're all interested in better neighborhood, and I have my faith and trust in a city government which is a part of to try to help everybody in the neighborhood. And, you know, when, when you do all this beautification on Beach Road on the south side, the cost to the right-hand side, or the, that would be the north side, it's, yes, it's incremental, but I don't think it's the end of the world for the developer. And I'm, you know, very pleased to really see a high-end development, to see that things are starting to crank back in the city, and I even, I'll be, when I retire, I'll be offering my service to any place that you guys want me to do.
All right, thank you.
I just want to state for the record that Mr. Bezoun submitted comments in writing that were distributed to all the planning commission members.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Bringer, and I represent Mr. Abbott, who lives on the south side.
Did you sign in? Thank you.
I have one that I prepared, I mean, I have Mr. Abbott that I'm going to distribute to all of you, but I will print primarily what's in it. I don't even know how much history the planning commission knows about this, but this site first came in for approval 14 years ago, and it's had kind of a long, slow, tortured history, which left it eventually sometime in, I think, 2010 with expired approvals. When my client bought the property, his parcel, there were no approvals in place at that time, and he was aware that something might have gone on, but didn't know anything about it. At some point, he became aware that the developer, the current developer, intended to develop the property, or maybe thinking about it, and that they were conceptually using plans that were similar to what had been previously approved. That caused him great concern because, I believe, unlike Mr. Bezoun's property, there are some serious development issues with respect to the southern boundary, and Brett, if you could put the picture back up, it had the elevations on it.
The elevations?
It had, there are some, there are some serious grading issues. There's also some serious water issues, surface water issues, because of the way the development will end up. It's substantially higher than the, my client's property, and kind of being raised actually in the course of the development. So the concept of the landscaping and things are, things that were negotiated because of the impact of these houses sitting way up above my client's house, which would be kind of sitting in a hole. There were also, as I say, tremendous issues because of the way the water, surface water runs off this property, down to the street, eventually to a drain that's on the, within the park, the south. He was very concerned about all of these, and other issues about the plan. Eventually, we had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Maniachi from Monirian Properties and try and discuss them, and try and find a way to amicably resolve them that would make everybody kind of more comfortable, and something that Mr. Abbott would find more appropriate in terms of how it affected, impacted his property. And I'm pleased to tell you that an agreement was kind of reached between the parties, but unfortunately, because of the timing and the fact that the city approvals weren't in place, and more importantly, the final engineering wasn't in place, it's, it would be very difficult to document an agreement between the parties at this time, since nothing's quite fixed yet. So I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Caroline and Mr. Savadant and kind of go through all of that, and at their suggestion, they came up with the idea of including the notes that you see on the plan and some revisions that were made in the plan to reflect things that are part of the agreement that Mr. Maniachi and Monirian entered into with my client, kind of as a stopgap until we can eventually document them. At that point, we had kind of a dilemma, which is, if we come and object to the plan now, because none of this is finalized, we're going to cause a lot of concern and consternation for no particularly good reason at this point, because there's, you know, we have every reason to believe that the agreement's going to be carried out. But I don't want to have any kind of problems that occur because of changes in the plans as they go through the final engineering. On the other hand, if I don't do anything now and there are changes, I will miss my opportunity to speak to you. So when Mr. Caroline and Mr. Savadant suggested the approach of putting the notes on the plan, we thought that was an excellent suggestion, and went back to Mr. Maniachi, who agreed to do that. And so the plan is submitted now with all those changes. It's our understanding that they all become part of the approval for the, the site plan approval for the property, and that it won't, those things won't be amended without some opportunity to express our concerns again in the future if they, for some reason, need to change those things. There are some items, for instance, how the restrictor works for the outflow from the detention pond as it crosses Mr. Abbott's property, that simply can't be worked out right now, because nobody knows what the right elevations are for those restrictors and when they should kick into place. And again, we would only ask that both the developer and the city give us an opportunity to have some input on the engineering plans as those are being finalized. I actually spoke about that subject today with Mr. Savadant, and I don't want to put words into his mouth, he can clear this up for you, but I think we're all on the same page in terms of how that process would work. I could probably phrase it differently than the fact that if those changes occurred, you'd have to have some kind of new public hearing to kind of bring those back out to the public, and we'd be happy to make a presentation at that time. I don't expect any of that. The only other item, so on that basis, my client is satisfied that he has no objections to the plan as offensive as it is to you. The other thing that's come up this evening that I just need to ask the question about is the sidewalk issue. I assume that the sidewalks shown on the plan because it's part of your requirement, your technical requirements for a developer destination. None of that requirement extends to anybody who's not involved in the development. No one's going to come back to, my client asked me to install a sidewalk to extend that, aren't they? So these are sidewalks to nowhere for now.
Can I answer that while you're here? No one's going to require sidewalks from abutting properties. Unless, unless your client sells his property and decides to redevelop it and add units, then we require sidewalks.
Fortunately for us, the property's too small. Excuse me one second. I think we're satisfied, and I appreciate your time and listening to us. I have a copy of the letter for, if you want to give Kathy the original, and there are copies for everyone. Thank you, thank you very much.
Petitioner present. Well, you've heard some of your neighbors today?
Yes.
Would you like to respond to any of what they've said, saying?
As far as the site itself, it was previously brought before the commission many years ago, up to 14 years ago, we started, or the previous developer started the project. We acquired it about a year ago with the understanding that it had previously approved, been approved by the city for full installation. The only reason we had to rego, go back before the board and everything is because some of the laws changed and some of the. of the laws changed and some of the permits have expired, so we came back and the planning commission asked us to resummit from scratch. So we started all over and with the new code ordinances, we had to find a discharge for our water in our retention pond. And that's where we came in to an agreement with Mr. Abbott to the south of us. In exchange for the easement across his back property, we put in the pine trees and a few other restrictions to accommodate both of us, that satisfied both of our needs. As far as clearing the site, there's a lot of grade changes that are going, going on. We'll do our due diligence to save trees that aren't in building envelopes, but with the past experiences of raising grades and now everything like that, a lot of the trees are, could be in jeopardy. We do have a significant amount of trees that we're replanting along the berm on Beach Road, along the south property, plus all the street requirement trees that are going to be planted within the development itself. As far as screening the property to the north, again, that was never part of the original development approval when we first submitted the, when it first was approved by the council and we're, we would do it as a need basis for homeowners and the custom homes we built.
Okay. Any questions? Professor Petitioner. Mr. Evans.
I wonder if you could address, you're certainly aware, I know you're a premium and a wonderful developer, but I'm wondering, I, I do see a lot of really huge trees that will be taken out. We're talking up to forty-one inches, you know, diameter oaks and beeches. And your layout did show which trees will actually be taken out. Are you, is it safe to say that if they're within, what, so many feet of the home, that if they will be taken out?
There's significant grade changes in the way we're developing the site and if we were be able, able to save a tree, we would, I'm an advocate of that, but in past experiences with the type of earth changes that are going to occur, I can't guarantee any type of tree that would, we would be able to save. I know we're going to do a diligence to the tree that's on the south property line, bring it back to retaining wall so that we don't interfere with that. Other than that, some of the ones on the fringe by the retention pond, those will do our best to save, but as far as the rest of the site, well, the ones along Beach Road will do our best to save as well, as long as when we go to excavate to dig in and tie into the sewer lines and the water lines, we don't have any problems.
Do you mind if I have a follow-up?
Yes.
The other question I had was, would, if you had developed this under the cluster development ordinance, which, which is optional of course, could you have saved more trees?
We'd end up putting in smaller homes and smaller lots and I don't know if that would be, would be continuous with the subdivisions around it and the values of the homes nearby. So I don't think that was a viable option for that site.
You have a question?
I have a question for you. How are you going to manage the stormwater if the site is currently draining to the south, to the south property line?
There's a detention basin.
What about at the east end of the property? I mean, the topographical drawing that we have here shows a pretty, pretty direct flow to the south, from the north to the south along the entire south property line.
Let my engineer explain that one.
I'm Jeremy Carnegie from Professional Engineering Associates, the civil engineer project. The stormwater is generally all getting intercepted into a storm sewer system and it's going to travel into the detention basin. It's a twenty-five-year detention design, so it should reduce the amount of flow coming onto the site, going through, onto the...
Is this, is this a storm drain that'll be going through the rear yards and with it, with some type of structures back there?
Yeah, there will be rear yard swells and lights that'll intercept the drains there and in the road. There'll be, there's some catch bases.
Mr. Savadant, how much has engineering looked at this?
Uh, when you say how much, they, they did review it and...
Did they finish grading plan that they looked at?
They had a preliminary grading plan that they looked at, but this is a preliminary site plan approval, so the final engineering and really, you know, really getting into the nitty-gritty details isn't required at this time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned that they're satisfied that there's not going to be any outflow off of these properties onto the property itself. That's really, that's more of a forty thousand foot's question than it is a detailed one.
Yeah, the quick, the quick answer is they, they approved the design for what it is at this stage.
Okay. All right. Can I ask? Yes, Mr. Savadant. In the past, we have always, or I've always understood that when a new development goes in, the development has to match property line, existing property lines or grades at property lines. They're not allowed to elevate their property to drain water. And I'm looking here at over a ten-foot difference between the property to the south and the center of the property, the south lot along Beach Road, and water's going to be hauling pretty fast at a ten-foot drop in the depth of that lot. And I always, we were always told, at least in the early days I was on this commission, that properties had to meet grade at, at the property lines, not have a retaining wall, which we have no detail on, other than to look at elevations and see that it may be anywhere from two to four feet. Two-foot, two-foot retaining wall or four-foot retaining wall is a pretty, pretty healthy pile of rocks.
I believe the requirement that you're referring to is related to, to stormwater and that improvements down to one site cannot have a negative impact on, on the neighboring site. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily that the grades match up, but that the effect of the grade changes not be detrimental to the neighboring property.
Well, then my comment still stands. In a, in a ten-foot drop in, in the depth of that lot, I question whether the storm drains are going to be able to carry all that water off and not have it go over that retaining wall onto the south property.
Can you address that or speak to that?
Yeah, the retaining wall is actually designed to alleviate any water going onto the neighboring property. We had to pick up the back of the lot to be able to get the water to flow by gravity into the system and to the detention basin, because we couldn't lower the detention basin any further. If we could, we could lower the rear yard also, but it's really just a function of the stormwater design, which ultimately is limited by the, of the detention basin. It's kind of controls the whole site grading, but that was, the reason the wall was there was to be high enough to intercept it and take it through the basin.
What's the grade difference going to be on the Abbott side of the wall from the base, from the base of the wall and grade up to the top of the wall?
Uh, the wall is about two to four feet high.
On the Abbott side?
The Abbott side is two to four feet lower than...
Than the top of the wall?
Yes.
Okay, let me react, let me ask my question. From the top of the wall, on the Abbott side, what's the difference from the top of the wall to the grade and on the new properties from the top of the wall to grade? Am I confusing you?
The Beachview new site division, subdivision is going to be four to two feet higher than the Abbott side.
Okay, and then on the Abbott side?
Yeah, then the Abbott side. The wall will be on my side of the property line and it'll be as low as two feet by the retention pond and go up to about four feet by the road and taper back down.
We're, we're still matching grade at the property line, but then on the Beachview property, there'll be some of the wall.
Another question, you've heard your, your neighbor to the north who's very supportive of your project, would you be willing to put some trees along his property, between the two properties and the north side of your property line?
It'll depend on as we build the houses and the views out. I don't want to guarantee anything as of this moment.
Well, certainly would be a nice gesture, good neighbor gesture, wouldn't it?
It would be.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I, Beach Road is a beautiful road and I know that it was intended to maintain that road as it was and as it is, and unfortunately I saw them pave the road and they put the nice yellow stripes on and everything else as if it was a highway instead of a natural road the way it was before, which I think they destroyed a lot of it. And I see we've got a sidewalk there which is going to compound that beauty that, that was there, which of course is our ordinance, but this is a beautiful site as it exists right now. And to me, and I'm sure that it was possibly influenced by your predecessor, the ones ten years, twenty years ago when they came in, but this is just a straight arrow. I mean, there is no ingenuity on this whatsoever, in my opinion. There's a lot that could have been done on this. I don't see any bio swells, I don't see anything that creates any kind of creativity and that's what upsets me more than anything else. When I see this, and I know we have to approve it because it meets all of our code requirements and zoning ordinance requirements, et cetera, but it certainly destroys, it disturbs me an awful lot that they're destroying the whole integrity of that lot because it is really a beautiful lot and there are some beautiful trees on that lot and that whole, whole area is just gorgeous. I, I see a bulldozer coming in and just bulldozing this whole thing down to nothing. It bothers me.
Could you, could you have something to say?
No, the trees bother me, but also the drainage bothers me a little bit. You know, I understand water, you need at least an eighth of an inch fall per foot to get any kind of drainage at all and it's got to travel quite a piece, but the aesthetics are very, very important, not only, I think, for the people that are going to buy these houses, but their neighbors too. And I think that every possible angle has to be looked at to make these as possible, you know, as environmentally, with the lowest environmental impact as possible.
Mr. Evans?
Getting back to the largest tree on the site, I think it's a thirty-seven or forty-one inch diameter red oak up at the front of the property, would Mr. Abbott be willing to just, and it's right up near the road, why would we not even, why don't we just start the retaining wall beyond that forty-one inch caliber oak? Why even disturb the roots in that area?
The drainage requirements from engineering to order to drain the proximity...
Not drainage, as you don't know the creativity to do it. Anything can be done if you really want to do it.
Just a follow-up. Does, you're saying engineering is required, that, that, that's where that retaining wall would, should be located, is that close to that forty-one inch diameter oak? Engineering said that?
Well, the drainage of the site required us to do something there. If we wanted to take that area of the site to the detention basin, we had to take it up, but as far as proximity to the tree, I don't see why we couldn't adjust the wall to not be so close to the tree.
How close are you going to the tree in the current diagram?
I'm not sure exactly.
It looks really, really close.
But we could, we could look at that when we do the grading design.
If you go within three or four feet of the forty-one inch diameter oak, you've essentially said goodbye to that tree.
We could work with our landscape, our architects.
The drip line. Basically.
Mr. Schultz, question since there's been considerable discussion about the sidewalk along Beach Road. Question for the city attorney, does the traffic committee still have the authority to review and waive sidewalks?
I don't think that anything's changed since I've been here recurring that authority.
So the developer and or, I would think the people of the community could go to the traffic committee and ask for a waiver from that sidewalk installation? And the other, the other question I have, the other question I have, and it's not really a question, it's more of an inquisitive statement, is if this retaining wall is going to be twenty-four to forty-eight inches, I would think it's probably going to have to have a railing on the top of it so people don't walk off it too. Because when you put up a deck, they tell you if it's more than X number of inches off the ground, you have to have a safety railing.
Thirty inches.
So that people don't go off the side.
We'll have to check with the ordinance and the building department.
There's nothing here about a railing on any of this, so.
There's, the pine trees we're planting on the south property line are going to be close to twenty-foot tall. It's going to be effectively a big screen along the property line. They're going to be planted ten to fifteen feet apart and that'll act as your buffer for someone to walk right through and off the side.
If the trees are grown together, I can see that working, but I would hate to see a child run after a baseball and there's a three-foot open between two spruce trees and they go head over heels off the retaining wall. I, you know, I, again, I think I'm going to reflect a lot of what Mr. Stratt said about the creativity and I, I almost put it as a question to you, what, what kind of incentives would you need as a developer to come up with a creative solution? I know this is not a large piece of property, but I mean, there really is, this is just very straightforward. There's really nothing in this that, that makes us unique, that made this, that would really make this property something that would be even more saleable than it is. And I'm not even talking about the building architecture, I'm just talking about the site plan.
This is a pretty narrow piece of property, it's, I mean, could be a lot of more flexibility in what's allowed on, what we can do in the building, I guess. I mean, what's permissible from the planning department in order to what we can put on the site. You know, we have a community standards that we want to adhere to. Yeah, we could eliminate the sidewalk along Beach Road, which would save some trees. We could eliminate the berm that's there along what's eliminating the pine trees, because to plant the new pine trees on top of a berm, we're going to have to take out some of the existing trees. So I mean, there is some flexibility there, but the site's pretty straightforward, it's an infill project, you know.
Yeah, but I think, I think what we're missing here is certainly there are requirements that the city has and there's owning ordinance, but there is some creativity component that can always be applied to, you know, rules and regulations to come up with something a little bit more, more unique. And I'm really asking you, not that, I mean, Mr. Stratt said it, I mean, if you've met all the requirements, you know, that's great, but what I'm trying to find out and maybe we won't answer tonight is, but what, Ken, coming to you as a, as a development community, what would be an incentive to do something a little different, to be a little bit more creative here? And so, you know, maybe, maybe just think about that, because we're going to continue to have these discussions at this table in the future and seeing what we can do to entice the development community, come to not only the residential, but commercial development also, to be a little bit more creative in the solutions they bring forward, because this is, this is just plain vanilla, you know, and again, I appreciate some of the challenges you're facing, but, but that's what creativity is all about.
Mr. Carl?
The only thing I just want to raise the planning commission in regards to incentives is the, the one-family clustering provision in the ordinance does allow for a lot of, a lot of relief from some of the zoning restrictions that was brought up. And in addition to that, applicants are allowed to get a density bonus of up to twenty percent increase to a number of units through that process as well, so there is a density bonus incentive as well as part of that.
You were, those...
I didn't know the twenty percent. Again, this is a tight site.
Well, it may not, it may not work on this site, but there are some incentives and I guess I want to push into that, that topic, you and Bringer.
I've used a cluster zoning before on another site we brought back, looked for to see, worked out real well.
Thank you. Mr. Drew Schultz.
Another question for whoever wants to answer it. Probably the lovely city attorney. Could the developer, if, if in fact there are significant trees that would be lost and or potentially lost to create a berm that is required by the city, could the ZBA grant a variance from that berm in return for saving significant tree row?
Certainly not a standard type of thing that the ZBACs, and if it has anything to do with engineering, they're not going to be able to do it. It's something that I can look into and see, but I think actually they're allowed to look at any part of the ordinance. But I think, actually, they're allowed to look at any part of the ordinance, and as long as it doesn't interfere with the engineering regulations, it's probably something they could look at, given the variance from the ordinance.
It only seems to make sense to me, and I'm not a builder, but it makes sense to me that the water and sewer hookups should be in incredible proximity to the roadway that you're going to have to take the trees out to put in anyway, instead of digging through somewhere else to bury a sewer and water line going onto the property and say, oh, well, gee, we had to cut those two great big trees down because that's where the sewer and water line was convenient to put in.
I think we would be, we'd have to get an opinion from the city engineer though, make sure that we weren't putting the ZBA in a position where they were creating a problem otherwise. But maybe it's something we want to talk to the city engineer about.
Mr. Savin.
We're under the assumption a berm is required along Beach Road?
That's what I thought I heard the developer say.
It's actually not required, it's proposed. The greenbelt trees are required, but the berm and tree combination is proposed. So they're not actually required to put a berm along Beach Road, but they're proposing it, which they are allowed to do.
Mr. Edmonds? I think that's part of the crux here, is that when you pile dirt, you know, three to four to six feet high, that's what kills tree root. I think Mr. Schultz has a really good suggestion that I would hope that they would consider, is to eliminate that berm along Beach Road and just infill with conifers, you know, as the site allows.
You'd be more than willing to look at that? That's not a problem.
I guess, I, I mean, I understand that the person that owns the trees has the right to cut them down. And I don't know who the developer was, but on Wildles Road, there is a development called Hidden Forest. And I have to say, they did a wonderful job hiding the forest because before they put the first shovel in the ground to dig a basement, there wasn't a single tree left on that piece of property. It was plowed, the topsoil was sold, and there was nothing. So the forest truly is hidden because it doesn't exist.
Well, this is one of the most knocked down gorgeous areas in Troy, as far as I'm concerned. It was a shame to put the roadway in. It would be a crippling thing to the neighborhood, I think, to put the sidewalk in because it goes nowhere. You know, when I was on the traffic committee, probably half the things that came up before us were sidewalk abatements. And when the sidewalks really didn't go anywhere unless they were on a main mile road, a main road. And I wouldn't consider Beach down here a main road. I would love to see that, I would love to see that berm go away and some screening. Because this is not a problem where you're having noise, decibels of noise infiltration into a subdivision. This area should be kept as pristine as possible. And this will actually increase the value of these homes that are going for sale. It won't diminish, or any little extra, from my experience with the construction industry, leaving those trees on there is going to do nothing but enhance the value of that property.
I agree with you. Mr. Edmonds, do you have a comment?
No, that was essentially my comment.
Mr. Stratt?
I just wanted to ask, who's going to maintain the retention on?
It'll be deeded over to the city.
Pardon?
It'll be deeded over to the city.
It's going to be in association.
Yes, it will be.
But they won't be responsible for it.
They won't own the retention basin, but I'm assuming that they'd want to maintain it to the aesthetics of the subdivision.
See, what I see, it's all on the south side. You've got your cash basins all the way along on property lines on the very south side. That could have been a bioswale all the way across there going right into the retention area. It could have saved you some money, it would have actually enhanced the property. I mean, there are things that could be done that are not necessarily expensive items. It could be savings item, but there are a little bit of creativity that has to be done. And I just see this as really, I know what you're doing, and I know, you know, you're trying to make money, too. I understand that, so that's the name of the game, but I'm not, it hurts me to see this just done the way it is, with the site the way it is. It's a gorgeous site.
Mr. Edmonds?
If you would consider the cluster zoning operation, and with an additional one or two units, would that not make your development more economically feasible?
You'd have to crunch the numbers. I wouldn't be able to get the high-end values because I wouldn't be able to build as large homes as some of the surrounding homes that are on the property, but I'd be willing to look into that.
Well, I would just say that, you know, some developments that are very, much closer homes together, they actually can't, they don't sacrifice the square footage. You're still allowed that.
I'm doing something similar to that on Finch Road, which was a cluster zoning that we used, and it turned out a very well development, where I was sold out.
Any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
May it resolve that the preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article Eight and Section ten point two zero two of the zoning ordinance is requested for Beach View Estates Site Condominium, eight unit slots, west side of Beach, south of Long Lake, Section eighteen, within the R one A one-family residential district, be granted subject to the following. One, obtain all the appropriate wetland permits, MDEQ, Oakland County Soil Erosion, Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, City of Troy, in any of the appropriate body prior to final site plan approval. Two, selectively clear only those trees necessary in attempt to preserve as many significant trees as possible. And three, show the proposed twenty Norway spruce allocated along the southern property line on the landscape plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Schultz.
Discussion, please. I just heard the developer say he would look at, or would be willing to look at the cluster option for this particular piece of property, but if we approve this tonight, he has site plan approval, and he's going to build exactly what is on these drawings. So I will be voting no on that resolution.
Mr. Edmonds?
I would amend the resolution to postpone it for two weeks before the developer come back with an alternate plan that takes into consideration many of the comments that have been made at this meeting.
I'd second that.
That's actually a substitute resolution, but that's all right, we have a maker and a substitute, so the substitute motion is to postpone. I'd devote on that first.
Okay. Does everybody understand the substitute motion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Shapki.
Is this on the substitute?
On the substitute, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
No, I think he's in absolute right to have approval by this commission. He's conformed to all the requirements, and if he wants to consider it, he can always come back and ask to have his site plan amended. I'm voting no.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
All right. So will it take two weeks, give you enough time?
Fine.
All right, we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay.
This is a rezoning application, it's file number Z seven four zero. Proposed charter one bank branch, one twenty-five Stevenson Highway and twelve fifty west fourteen mile, section thirty-five, from O Office to IB Integrated Industrial and Business District. Mr. Savin, what about you?
Yeah, I'll do this one. You will recall that there was a public hearing on this item, June twelfth, a regular meeting. And the petitioner is Lormac Stern Development Company. They seek a rezoning from Office to IB Industrial, excuse me, Integrated Industrial and Business. The parcel, seven acres in area, the applicant came forward with essentially a straight rezoning. However, they also indicated they'd be willing to provide a thirty-foot wide greenbelt open space along the western property line, that portion of the property line that abuts residential. And their intention was, and we actually met with the applicant before they submitted the application, so it was actually kind of sort of our idea, so if you confuse anybody, you can blame me. What they wanted to do was, they want to make sure they gave everybody an opportunity to have some input into the conditions that were being proposed. Because they wanted to be fair to the neighbors who, you know, there's an established residential neighborhood on two sides. They want to give the neighbors an opportunity to have input at the public hearing, and they want an opportunity to listen to the neighbors at any issues they had, they want to have an opportunity to consider those issues, perhaps incorporate those into any conditions that may be proposed. They also want an opportunity to listen to the planning commission for your input. So the slate they brought forward was relatively blank, they only had, you know, the one condition, and they were open to comments and suggestions by the planning commission, recognizing, of course, that any condition that's offered has got to be voluntary, but they wanted to listen to everybody. So they had the public hearing, and I believe no one commented at the public hearing. So in terms of getting input from the neighbors, that didn't happen because no one showed up. But they nonetheless did want to move forward at the study session and listen to the planning commission's input in terms of what your concerns are, possible suggestions that they could consider moving forward with the conditional zoning application. So that's why we're here this evening. Again, this is a subject property, there's an existing bank branch here, and an office building that's presently vacant here, a large parking lot here, and again, this is the residential area here is to the north and to the west. And there's the zoning that you see, it's zone O, and the property to the north is also zone O here, but this property to the north here is zone, I believe it's R one E. This is what they proposed, is a basic, basically a kind of an as-built drawing, basically, but it's missing the office here. But the intent was to show this. Now, we had some discussion, also, I believe Mr. Stratt brought it up, and correctly brought it up, that a few years ago, we amended the zoning ordinance to require that we get actual, for conditional rezonings, we get full-blown preliminary site plan applications to accompany the conditional zoning application. And what the new ordinance does is that the applicant can voluntarily submit a preliminary site plan, but they don't have to, they can submit something as simple as this. For example, if what they were concerned about, what they really wanted to mitigate was noise late at night, you know, it's not necessarily appropriate to have to submit a full-blown application just to say that we're not going to have, we're not going to be open between midnight and six AM. That's not necessarily something you have to have a full-blown site plan to, you know, to propose a condition. That was kind of the reasoning behind modifying the conditional zoning requirements. So again, they're not required to submit a full-blown preliminary site plan application. Something like this could suffice, as long as it adequately represents what's being voluntarily proposed for the conditional zoning. So with that all being said, the petitioner is here, and I believe what he's looking for is just some feedback from the planning commission on this item.
Any questions for Mr. Savin?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Edmonds. I seem to recall when we did the new zoning ordinance, that our previous planning consultants referred to the new integrated business, IB Integrated Industrial and Business, and said it was literally cowboy town, in his words. We would allow just about anything to win there. And I have a concern with this backing up the residential to making that type of zoning. And I'm certainly willing to discuss, you know, suggestions that we might have as to what could go in there.
You're absolutely correct. It allows essentially everything except single-family homes. It is integrated industrial and business, so it still carries over the M1 uses, but it also, on top of that, permits retail office, et cetera. So I believe what the applicant is looking for is, you're absolutely right, there may be some uses that the planning commission is concerned about, and I think he wants to kind of identify what those are. So if it's, you know, industrial-type uses or more intense industrial-type uses, he's looking for an indication from the board of what those uses are.
Mr. Tagle, I'd just like to echo Mr. Edmund's thoughts, I took the words out of my mouth. Unless I see something on there proposed in lieu of a conditional, I agree, it's a wide-open West there, and if I'm a residential neighbor, I'm going to be concerned. I don't want tin smelter in my backyard, I'll lay an example.
Mr. Schultz.
In looking at the table of permitted uses, which I'm trying to get back up, but I did it before, bars and restaurants with outdoor dining, directly adjacent to residential could certainly be a concern. Drive-throughs is an ancillary use. We're seeing sandwich shops and coffee shops seem to want to go on virtually every piece of property that exists in the city, and they all want to be open twenty-four hours, and they all want their drive-through on the back so that they can have the stacking. And if I lived in that subdivision and I had a drive-through that was serving coffee twenty-four hours a day, I probably wouldn't be terribly happy, especially since that hasn't existed since I bought my house in nineteen seventy or whenever. Also, veterinary clinics with barking dogs, truck terminals, manufacturing facilities, the commercial greenhouses, I mean, there's a whole bunch of permitted uses in IB that are inappropriate for this location in one man's opinion.
Anything else? The floor is yours.
Thank you. Jason Horton and Daniel Stern on behalf of Lormac Stern Development Company, the developers who are using the property. We hear the concern. That's why we're here tonight to see what can be fashioned of this. I think it's kind of important to give a backdrop as to how a developer or a proposed owner comes and looks at one of these properties, but typically, you interface with the city, and the first thing you do if you're thinking about removing one of the uses is to look at the master plan. And the master plan calls for exactly this kind of zoning, and then you would kind of extrapolate from there and look down the street, and you see next to adjacent residential uses, the same subdivision that's to the east and to the north of the property is surrounded by, you know, the same exact zoning that we're proposing. And you talk to not only the planners, but the economic developers and other people, and they tell you, look, we're suffering from, the reason why we have the zoning classification is because we have a lot of obsolete properties, a lot of them are vacant, both office vacant and industrial vacant, and we want them put to productive economic use because it's a drag on our tax rolls and it's a blight, it gets to be a blight in the neighborhood. What we have here, and if we could flip back to the existing uses, what we have here...
This, this...
Yeah. We have here is a bank branch which was owned by the same people that operated this office building for a number of years and shut it down. It is a two-story office building that is probably functionally obsolete, and I'll tell you why. And I say probably because we haven't made a final determination on it. It has not been used as an office building for a number of years. It was built as a single-tenant office building, corporate user, if you will, it was used as some kind of data center. There aren't any windows in the building. It would, we've tried to offer it for a corporate headquarter building with limited, very limited interest, but we haven't struck out on that yet. But it would have to be in most likely cases diverted to multi-tenant use, which there's fire exits and corridors that, you know, I could go on and ad nauseam and list all the things that are there. But for a building that's old and kind of tired, has no windows in it, it's going to need a lot of modeling, if it were used for a corporate office, it might be better to tear it down. And if you have to go to a multi-tenant use, it's probably not going to be able to hack it off. Having said that, we're working very hard with a couple of prospects, we haven't let it go, but we're trying to understand what we might be able to offer to the marketplace. It may very well be that we could have both storage and limited office in the same facility there by opening up further development possibilities to the west where that big thereby opening up further development possibilities to the west where that big vacant space is. We don't know. We need to and would like very much to be able to market this as responsible developers to as many potential acceptable users as you possibly can. That's kind of development 101. So we are with staff in terms of exactly the characterization here, what wouldn't work. There is a total brick fence that is, I think, about eight feet tall, screen fence next to every piece of residential property, if that's correct. At staff suggestion, we added an additional 30 feet of additional buffer space to, excuse me, buffer space to the property, and we have no plan. But we understand that you'd like to see detail, we don't know, we like to be able to tell people, prospective users, to come in, but we don't want to come in when we don't know how we can use it. Right now, the only thing it's zoned for is office. And that is clearly like the industrial, the obsolete use, and I think when they applied the same IB district just to the properties on the north, they had in mind, next to the same residential subdivision, the possibility that, you know, all these uses are possible. We're willing to live with what we have, what we can say, and stick by limitations that we might be able to voluntarily make here. If not, it gives us very little direction in which we go.
So basically, what they want to be able to do is they want to have flexibility, they want to be able to market the property, be able to put a brochure out or someone calls and say, "It's zoned IB and it can be used for anything in the IB except, you know, A, B, C, D." So there's assurances, but there's still flexibility in terms of all these uses that can still be developed on this property. What they want is a list of what...
Remember, we'd have to come in for a site plan approval for any of those uses at the time we do that, and it's not like a blank check, we could start building anything we wanted tomorrow.
Let me turn around, Mr. Savinat's comments. Why don't you market this thing? And if you've got a buyer or someone who wants to develop this site, which calls for a different zoning than office, come in for us, we're fairly receptive. So, you know, you can do it both ways. And what we're afraid of is just what somebody's mentioned, maybe a drive-in, 24-hour a day, something that would be inappropriate next to this residential.
Okay, other than to say that that's a situation you have right next door with no apparent problem and...
But it's an office, there was an office.
Well, this is an office too.
Yeah.
But it's now zoned, all those properties, those office buildings are zoned IB.
But you've got more uses under the IB.
Excuse me?
You've got more uses under the IB.
So do that.
And not our office, you can't put a drive-in in the office.
No, no, no. If any of those obsolete, I'm sorry, excuse me, if any of those obsolete office buildings north along Stevenson Highway were to be torn down because they're vacant and the owner no longer wants to be able to pay taxes on what would be a functionally or economically obsolete building, that building comes down and those people have open zoning, those are all IB, those properties are all zoned IB to the...
No, that hasn't happened, though.
No, it hasn't happened, we haven't torn down, we haven't torn down our building either.
Okay, well, whatever happens, maybe you can come back, but I'm not, at this point, ready to give you an open door to that drive-in.
Well, we're not asking for an open door, we're asking, you know, what uses could absolutely be ruled out, what uses you might be willing to look at a site plan for. The simple answer to your question is, it's very difficult to entice somebody on an if-come proposition. It's much easier to attract a field of users, of potential users, by telling them, "We, under the zoning, we subject your site plan and engineering requirements, this is about what you could do."
Yeah, if you're looking for declaratory judgment from this group as to what would go in there, I don't think you're going to get it.
I hear you. I understand your position, other than to say that everybody else in that same zoning classification doesn't seem to be a problem, you know.
Got you anyway.
They're zoned, the same master plan designation that we have.
Sure. Did you have a comment?
Just to comment, Mr. Savinat's comment slightly differently, and something that we have always considered during the decade plus that I've been on this commission. When we rezone, we automatically are giving the developer permission to do whatever is permitted within that zoning district. And here again, a 24-hour dry cleaning plant with 12-foot garage doors open along the backside abutting the residential property is probably not something that the residents would like to have next door to them, but it's permitted, not saying it's going to happen, but it's permitted in use, as is a manufacturing plant, as a truck terminal, as a veterinarian's office, or a warehouse, or a commercial greenhouse. I mean, to just, to just give a carte blanche, you're now IB, we're buying a pig in a poke.
Mr. Stratt. And just to clarify, I think the petitioner, this property is not zoned IB right now.
That's correct.
It's zoned office. And I believe that's what you stated, but...
I'm sorry, I missed the purpose of your...
Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, you know, this is an excellent example, I feel, of what we're going to be running into, problem sites, and how are we going to be flexible and yet protecting ourselves is going to be an important thing. I don't know what the solution here is, but I see this as being the start of many of these kinds of conditions that we're going to be having. Maple Road everywhere, so I don't care where, up and down Stevenson Highway, but I agree with the comments that are made. I don't know what the solution is.
I think I might have one, if you don't mind, and I'll throw up. You know, really, we're trying to balance two things, and I honestly think we're on the same page with what we're trying to balance. A, we're both trying to attract usage to this site. I mean, obviously, you guys don't want to see it vacant, I, we own it, we're not just an applicant thinking, "I, we now own it, we want to see it developed." So how can we make that happen but give you the protection without us, both of us, us and us being at a competitive disadvantage? And if we're not zoned in today's market, I hear the comments and I truly respect what you're saying, but when there's a national user that comes into town and an eighth of a mile down the street that might be in another town zoned and we're not zoned, we're not getting the deal. You're not getting it, I'm not getting it, we're both not getting it. Today's patience on these, you know, for these national guys, it just isn't, it isn't there anymore. I mean, and so, at the same time, I've heard some usage, uses that were talked about, I would contractually agree today, we'd never put there. Veterinarian, dog barking, no, wouldn't do it. Manufacturing, no. So what I think a good solution is, is to make us competitive, both of us, make the site competitive. Right now, it's an office zoning in an office market that is obviously, that is obviously really, really bad. At the same time, you want to protect the residents, I mean, I'll tell you today, our company, Lormax Stern, we ended up, we developed Big Beaver and Rochester Road way back, that's the last project we did in Troy, but almost every shopping center, we have 28 shopping centers in the state of Michigan, and almost every single one of them is surrounded by residential. We know how to do it, we're cognizant, we're proud of everything we've built, and all the protections that you want, we'd agree to today. What I want to be able to do is tell somebody, "Hey, we're zoned, but here's what our zoning is and here's what we've agreed to." And I guess the example of the greenbelt is something where we've already gone over and above what the zoning today is and said, "Hey, we know that this isn't required, but there's a subdivision around here, so this is what we've agreed to." At the same time, a veterinarian calls us, we might be zoned IB, but we've agreed that we won't do that. There's a dry cleaning plant, they come in, they want to do a manufacturing, dry cleaning, we won't do that. Another manufacturing facility comes in, we won't do that. Auto body repair, you know, something that makes a lot of noise, we won't do that. So I, I guess I propose is, I'd love to agree to a ton of restrictions, but to at least have the flexibility so that I can compete with somebody that is in the next town and a quarter mile down the street.
I started that head move down this way.
Mr. Schultz.
Since this is a conditional rezoning and the planning commission nor the planning department can ask you to do anything, you have to voluntarily provide any conditions. Here again, I would suggest that perhaps we should have you go away for two weeks and come back with a conditional rezoning that exempts the property from certain things that you don't think you would ever build on that property, and offer those as exceptions for the conditional rezoning, and let us review that again, because we are, by state law, we cannot ask you for anything.
We understand that, it's the conditional zoning, it's best illegal dance, and I think everybody recognizes that for what it is, but what we hope to, first of all, I thought this was a study session, so I didn't realize actions were actually being taken. And I apologize for that, but to kind of get a sense of, you know, what it is that would be the most objectionable, we're hearing, we're hearing that and just want to know any other thoughts that you have. Who knows what we might volunteer when we came back in two weeks.
If I could continue for just a moment. Seven acres in area, and I'm not, again, I'm not a builder. I don't know if, and I doubt they can, but I don't know if Lowe's can go in on seven acres, but, you know, that's probably, in my opinion, probably not a viable business for this location either. Something, something professional, something, if it's going to be, I would see if it's going to be a restaurant kind of a thing, something that doesn't have a 24-hour drive-through, that it's like, "Would you like a number three tonight?" "No, I said number seven." You know, through a speaker. But, you know, if the petitioner wanted to come back with some things that they're willing to not put on the property, I'm more than happy to look at giving them an IB rezoning recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Krent.
Yeah, I want to just reiterate what Mr. Schultz said, but, you know, how do we, again, what Mr. Stratt said, how do we find that solution, you know, because you can give us a huge laundry list and it may leave out one that, "Oh my God, we forgot about that one and now it's coming in and, boy, we can't do a thing about it." And, you know, that's, it's like, you know, with a cat and mouse game, what do you, how do you figure that out? I'm, I obviously want it developed. And is there some kind of insurance thing about, of, when we leave something out, you know, something kind of a, you know? There is none. And then, and then one other thing, one other thing, once it's rezoned IB, and will those, maybe for the lawyer to answer, will those conditions stay with the property? They will, okay.
They will stay. And then back to...
That's the beauty of the conditional zoning.
Okay, good, thanks.
Are you next?
No, that's a...
What gets approved is theoretically, if it does get approved, parcels rezoned conditionally and there's a conditional rezoning agreement that lays out the stipulations of the agreement. So it'll probably, if there's a site plan attached or if there's a drawing like this attached or whatever, that'll, it'll state that in the PUD agreement that there's attachments that clarify things. But it would say basically that it's conditioned, it's rezoned conditionally, it's volunteered, and it's entered into by both parties and it's, at the end of the day, it's filed with the register of deeds, it runs the land, and it'll list out, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do, and it's a laundry list. I just want to stress that if it is rezoned and anything that's done to this property is going to come back for a planning commission for either special use or site plan, so there's still another opportunity to have good design. And what I, what they're looking for is, again, flexibility and they want some direction in terms of what the planning commission wants or doesn't want. I think Mr. Schultz is on the right track, he's given you some things, some ideas, and what I did is, I made sure, I made sure that the zoning ordinance is loaded on the laptops tonight, but what I did is I, I just went through the list from table 4.21 and I just kind of came up with like about a dozen things that if I was living next door, what would I not want to live next door?
Better than I was.
So, you know, open-air business, probably not. Commercial kennels or pet daycare, as Mr. Schultz indicated, manufacturing and assembly...
Wait a second, can you...
Oh, well, this is only me, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, is all I'm doing, this is just...
So far, we checked the same thing.
Yeah, manufacturing and assembly, truck terminals, probably not real happy with that, central dry cleaning and laundry plants, which Mr. Schultz mentioned, outdoor storage, probably wouldn't be real thrilled with that, materials recovering facility, and I don't think I want a recycling plant next to my house.
I don't think that's committed.
Vehicle and recreational vehicle sales, vehicle repair stations, vehicle auctions, ambulance facilities, and vehicle rental. And as Mr. Schultz indicated, if there was loudspeakers, I probably wouldn't want to hear them at 2:00 in the morning. You'd probably, you know, want limitations on what time these things are operating, but other than that, there's still a lot of uses in there in terms of providing flexibility and, you know, also some safeguards for the residential properties to the west and to the north.
Give us some great ideas of the kind of things to announce, you're just listening.
Thanks, Mr. Schultz.
And Mr. Krent made the comment, or, yeah, the comment that, "What if we miss something?" Well, if this petitioner is going to come back in a couple of weeks with some conditions on a rezoning, I would strongly suggest that all of us on the planning commission review section 44 dot 21 in detail before that meeting to see exactly what's allowed in the IB district and make sure that we don't miss something, because we're only going to get one shot at this.
Let me again reverse it. Why don't you come back and tell us what you would like to see on this lot, instead of us telling you what you can't do?
Well, here's the reason why, honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't have anybody, I don't have anybody today. I don't, and I don't, I want to, I don't want to limit my playing field, but my playing field and your playing field, I think is going to be the same. I don't think that what I want to see is going to be much different from what you want to see. But again, I guess the only thing I'll stress, and this is just beyond the site, it, to make it tough for some, make it tough for me is okay, but for the user, for the guy who's going to be in the city for a long time that's going to use that property, we, you know, I, I'm just, my opinion, I mean, you know, we have a lot, we've been around a long time, we own a lot of shopping centers and all over the state and other areas in the country. I think there's a way to give you more protection that you get on straight zoning, restrict uses you don't want to see, and essentially be telling somebody you have open arms but still having another crack...